It's 5:30. We'll call the meeting to order. If we'd all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. First, will, are there any additional items? We'll consider adopting the order or the agenda tonight. Are there any additional items the commissioners have?
No, sir. No, sir. I don't have any.
Any changes to the consent agenda? Then I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Consent agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda.
Second?
The motion is second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Item three, presentations. Meritorious Conduct Awards. Chief?
Good evening. Damon and Charlie, if you guys could come forward. I want to thank the other officers for coming out to support, and Charlie and Damon, the night. Commissioners, on April 27th, these two officers were dispatched to, our Officer Athie on the left was dispatched to a report of a suicidal individual. And when he arrived, he found quite a bit of blood in the residence. And so he did an exigent search of the residence and located a man with a pretty severe laceration, self-inflicted. As he was working with the officer, or with the man, Officer Benedict arrived to assist. And at some point in the encounter, the gentleman thought it would be a good idea to attempt to take the Officer Athie's weapon from him. And so a brief struggle ensued, and the officers were able to protect themselves with the minimal amount of force necessary, and a very serious incident was averted. As you know, when you try to disarm a police officer, it's a very serious situation. So based off of the investigation that I conducted after hearing about the incident, I determined that they need to be recognized for their conduct on that date. They went to their training, they went to their tactics, and they composed themselves very well. And then, once the incident was closed, they got the gentleman, the medical care, and the mental health that he needed. So, I want to personally thank you guys for the outstanding service that you did on that day, and I'm very glad that you're safe and no one, and that no police officers were injured that day. So, this is your letters of meritorious conduct?
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you for your honor. Congratulations.
And it's also important to remember that this is just one example of the many risks that these officers take and the outstanding work they do and service to our community every day. And I'm very fortunate to work with the police officers that we have in our department, and our community is very fortunate to have the staff that we have, and I couldn't be more proud of the people I serve with, so.
Well, not too long ago, was it in Olathe, that two officers were in a similar situation that turned out the other way. The suspect was able to secure an officer's handgun and ended up wounding one, or was it both of them were killed?
Yes. Oh, in the county officers? Yes. They were both killed, yes.
Yeah, you know, it's, you never know how something that quick can change, and you can train, but it's not like when you're right there. And we're really appreciative of all of our officers for their dedication to put their life on the line, and even a harmless, what might be perceived as harmless call can turn tragic for both the one responding and the one that they're there to assist. So, you know, we're very, very fortunate in this case that you were both able to back off and come out okay. And also for the individual you were helping, it just, you know, it's hard to describe or come to words of what you had to experience at that time unless you were there. And we're very fortunate that it turned out like it did. And we do appreciate all of our officers and the service, and, you know, want to support the chief and the department and all the training that's necessary to make sure you guys are prepared for any situation you encounter. But thank you for bringing this to our attention and the public's attention, Chief.
No, you're welcome, and I appreciate you guys helping me recognize them for the community.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Item four, items for commission action. Item A, consider 2019 budget request from the Library Board of Trustees that was tabled from the June 14, 2018 meeting. Do you want to s-
I don't know if you need to present again. If you remember, we left it that we would go back and look at where we are in the 2019 capital budget, and especially in the quality of life fund, and see what we had looking at, what we were looking at, and whether we could fund the library's requests. Mike and I have done that. We've actually finished our, well, at least right now, we think we're balanced in everything, our proposed budget, including our operating and capital. So, we're recommending to approve that $60,000 for the library out of the quality of life fund. We have significant funds there to cover that. We began this year in 2018 with a fund balance of about $174,000, and we'll, and we're, there's some other things coming out of there for the Riverside Aquatic Center pool as well, but $15,000 for that as well. So, it'll, we have enough funds, and so we're recommending that you approve that.
Great.
Well, looking at the total budget, and I think you had mentioned that there's a possibility of getting grants for some of the furnishings and all. Another, with our quality of life projects, we're at a point that we're going to look at maintenance issues on all of them. I think even the pool floor, the children's-
That's what the pool is, yeah. We were out there just yesterday, Dave and myself, and the safety committee, and our K-Mit representative went through the pool again. She had come down about a month or so ago and looked at some issues that the pool had to improve and fix right away, and they've done that, but there's still some issues like the floor, and, you know, it's just cement, it's very slippery in the shower room. They need to be fixed. But the other main thing there, of course, is the chemical room, they're not separated. I think you remember that discussion. We were looking at raising the wall or putting a roof over those two rooms and ventilating them out instead of the way they are now, and we're putting in an alarm system right away. But, and that's, so that's about $15,000 for next year is for some of that, as well as some other maintenance issues there at the pool. So you're right, it's really turning into maintenance.
Well, what I was going to get in, when I looked at the facility today, there seems on some of the operations, a gray area of where our point ends and theirs begins. And without that division, then, like the library board and the foundation has no idea of where maintenance, that we give them the $25,000, is it just given and how you work out, or is it for specific areas? And as each facility age, the maintenance is going to increase, and if we don't recognize addressing how much of that money is given to them for programs, and how much maintenance is going to increase, we're going to find ourselves coming up with situations at budget time that there's not going to be funds. We're going to, we really need to look at, with both the pool, the library, and even Memorial Hall and other facilities, how much our HVAC and maintenance is going to incur. And with, you know, like, with the library, are we expected to provide them the shelves, or is that their obligation? So unless we come to agreement, we can't really project into the future and allow them to operate, you know, like this. If they can get grants out of this, then it would, it would help both of us. You know, I think when I look, we're about, what, $21,000 of construction and maintenance items, that there are issues of safety dealing with this. But as we go forward in budgeting, we need to get our line item for each of our quality of life items, and start increasing and building a reserve there so that we can be prepared for significant cost increases with maintenance. So, when we look at the $60,000, if you can, and this is what I was going to ask you from the podium, is-
And they can only raise it like that?
Is, is it possible to set our budget at $60,000, but then reduce it as you get grants for different areas in the project?
Yeah, we could do that.
Because we can always use the money at the pool, or here elsewhere, or then come back next year and use it somewhere else, again at the library. But, you know, instead of us agreeing to give them all $60,000 and not come back and reduce it with grants.
So that is a maximum, basically?
Up to $60,000, something like that.
That seems reasonable to us.
The quality of life-
Yeah, it's just a budget. We're not going to write them a check, right? It's just a budget that they can spend.
Right. Base it on a maximum budget, but then, you know, we need to work so that the grants could reduce that amount, and you could accomplish what needs to be done.
The fund itself is, it's not generating any more money. It's, we're seeing at $174,000. So, this is the money that's left, that's going to be used to maintain the facilities at the pool and at the library and what it was intended for. So, I guess maybe we draw a fine line between maintenance and then what is going to be required as considered cosmetic, or redesign, or repurpose of an area. Because once that money's spent, then it's gone, and we're going to have to, somewhere down the road, find other sources of revenue to maintain a maintenance money available to address issues that are going to occur at the pool, like Craig said, and at the library, your windows. And if you, if you had a damaged roof, there'd still be a deductible involved that would have to be met. So, it's something that, I'm kind of walking the fine line here.
Well, the way we view it, I can't speak for Mike, but the way I view the quality of life, as I see it, is it is for one-time, kind of one-time things. It's not for your ongoing maintenance that you have in your operating budget. I mean, every budget has an operating, a maintenance line for routine things. That's what this fund is not for, that. This is for kind of the major stuff, like, well, this is kind of a new restructuring, but, you know, if they had something major to the building happen, damage or something, yeah, then we might tap this. But this isn't something you would tap every year for just ongoing maintenance. That's responsibility of the library and the rec. The recreation committee, you know, we actually have an agreement with them. It talks about they're responsible for their maintenance. But it still gets into a gray area when you look at the agreement, how you interpret that, and what's maintenance, and what's our responsibility, and the rec's responsibility.
And so that's where you look at that maintenance. If they're doing a budget and they're assuming we're going to give them $25,000 that can be used for programs and utilities, and now a chiller goes down, we're looking at $50,000 to $75,000 to replace, we don't have anything in writing about where that maintenance ends and where we pick it up. So, in one interpretation, we could say, well, you're using the building, you handle the major maintenance. So that's what I think we need to look down the line, that we understand that minor items are covered as operation, but then there's a division of major, you know, changing a filter, okay, but a chiller, a boiler goes down, control system, then, but then if we look at quality of life fund as only being used for the one time, then where's that money come from? We don't have a line item to deal with those big-ticket items, and I don't think it's, it's fair for us to expect the library to pick up those items that, you know, that, I kind of see that $25,000 as returning money to the citizens for the services that the library provides. The internet, the children's program, the third floor was, it wasn't the children's library when I was there in the summer. You know, it was hardly anyone there then, and this is, there's kids everywhere, you know, and I think that's something, a selling point that our city has that others don't, are the services that we're giving back to the people. And I know the library has done an excellent job on really reaching out and bringing programs to the whole spectrum, the children, the adults, and everyone, so.
Thank you.
But as we look at our budget preparation for next year, I think we need to look at the line item and address maintenance with our users, the library and the rec commission, how much comes out of their budget, and how we're going to handle those so that they can anticipate full use of the money at their budgeting time, and know that they can rely upon us to come back. So, and looking at the $60,000 that has been requested, then I would just say that that be a budget item as we look at making a motion and get adjusted as grants are given or received. More questions?
Yep.
So, do we have a motion?
Unless you want to try it, or?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve establishing a $60,000 maximum operating budget for the modifications to the third floor children's area of the library.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Did you get that, Kelly?
Yes, Mayor moved to approve establishing a $60,000 maximum operating budget for the modifications to the third floor children's area of the library, seconded by Gary Hogshead.
Then all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it, and the children will appreciate it as well.
Well, we appreciate everything the library does, you know, again, for the community, the library board of trustees, and also your foundation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a presentation from Wayne Goodmanson, KDOT District Four Engineer. He's going to address the commission regarding the priority of the proposed US 160, US 169 overpass.
Good afternoon, and thank you for letting me come before the commission. I really appreciate it. Kelly, I owe you one. I'm wearing a different hat tonight. Tonight, I actually get to wear a secretary's hat. And with that said, what this has all transpired from is, many years ago, we all worked together, and we came up with a T-Works program. There were a number of projects that were designated to be built out of that T-Works program, and then money got tight, and funds left, and there were 23 projects that were delayed. Two of those 23 projects are in Montgomery County. The legislature passed a bill, and this bill provides the KDOT with $200 million that can be bonded for fiscal year 18, and $200 million for fiscal year 19. It also put in there a little caveat, that it said the secretary, or his representative me, needs to get in touch with the partners that were in support of these projects, and make sure that these projects are still a priority project for the communities. Now, with that said, priority does not mean pennies from heaven will show up. Priority just means that I'll get back with my boss, he'll give it to the secretary, and says, Independence, Cherryvale, Coffeyville, whomever, this still considers the junction out east of town a priority project for them. Again, I want to emphasize that it does not mean it'll be funded. This bill also tasks the secretary with trying to figure out a way to best use this money that we can bond to get the most bang for our buck on the projects that are still left. And so he just wants to make sure that he's not trying to put money into a project that nobody wants to support. So on his behalf, I'm here to see and ask the commission if they are still supportive of the project east of Independence. It'll be a reconstruction of the intersection, and there will be an overpass. The plan is to have an overpass taking 160 over 169 with ramps and accessing 169. So with that built, we should not have fatality crashes out there, they should be greatly reduced. And so if the commission is in favor of this, if something could just be written into the minutes, a number of other commissions have passed resolutions, I just need something to take back to my boss on Monday to say yea or nay, that you're supportive of it.
What's your opinion?
I'm in support of it.
Yeah, I am too. It needs, it needs work. There's been probably about seven, eight, or nine fatalities out in that area.
There have been a number of them, and many years ago, in my previous life, when I was working out of here, I was tasked with coming up with a local community committee, and we looked at that intersection out there. We didn't have any money to do much with it. But when we started studying the intersection, the two demographic groups that were involved in most of the crashes were the elderly people and the young kids, you know, which is typical with about anything. But I met with a KOM reporter out there many years ago, and she, she got out of her vehicle, and she says, "I can't believe this is a dangerous intersection." And I had to correct her, Jeff. I said, "No, this is an intersection that has a lot of crashes, but you can see forever." And whatever the reason is, there are a lot of crashes out there. So I will shut up and just see if you're supportive. It sounds like you are.
Yeah, yeah, I'm supportive also. I think probably the best would be to pass a resolution. If you would want to prepare a resolution and bring it, have it ready for the next commission meeting.
You could adopt it and follow it up by signing it. Just a general resolution in support.
Okay.
I can, that way you don't have to wait two weeks. He wants something for Monday.
Oh, for Monday?
If, if at all possible, my boss, my boss has tasked me with getting back to him Monday by close of business.
Well, let's see. Do you have any more money for Peter Pan Road, maybe out to Oak Street? We might be able to get it-
Now, now, let's get one thing straight.
Okay.
This support for 169 and 160 has nothing to do with C-Clip money. I was telling Kelly, it's two different pots of golds.
Well, yeah, doesn't hurt to ask, does it?
And I have not heard, I've been told, I think they told us, Craig, you can correct me if I'm wrong, latter part of August, decisions will be made, or we will be told which projects were selected with C-Clip funds.
But when you walked up, you said to Kelly that you owed her, so we want to know exactly how much you owe her. What does that translate to?
What my, what my debt to her was, is that I would not take C-Clip money and put it out on 169. That's what my debt was.
Yeah.
It is a good question, though, because my pots of gold are getting pretty short.
Yeah. Well, we appreciate what you've done with the economic development, money on Peter Pan Road. That's really going to help.
That was one of my better days. Walked into the secretary's office asking for $200,000 and came out with $3,000. I mean, that doesn't happen very often, so that was quite a blessing.
So maybe we owe you one.
Oh.
We appreciate KDOT for everything they've done, and, you know, the tragedies that have happened there, it's, we've got to keep supporting it to see it come to fruition, so.
We've had a very good partnership, a lot of the corners, 10th Street, Chestnut, we've had a lot of good partnership, project, plank projects, surfacing and stuff, so it's been a joy to work with.
Appreciate all that, so.
Yes.
I have just a quick question. If, when this funding, when and if it becomes available and the project actually starts, what's a, give some timeline as far as the start and the completion of the project?
Your C-Clip projects?
Or this?
This 169 project?
160 and 160.
I don't really have, right now, it's a, it's a project that's on the table. I mean, the plans are already built, and we've been given the go-ahead to get the utilities moved and all the right-of-way purchased. So that tells me that if I get enough yays into the secretary, I think it is a priority project in his mind. Now, I'm just assuming this, which I shouldn't do, but I think it could happen relatively soon, maybe by the end of the year. But again, it's not my decision. I mean, it's strictly his. But, and the only reason I'm optimistic about it is because I have been given the go-ahead to get all the right-of-way taken care of and get the utilities out of the way. And there would not be an interest in spending that money if there wasn't some reason to generate that kind of action. But as far as the timeframe, I'm really not certain.
Okay.
If I find out, would you like me to come back and let you know?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay, I can, I like coming to Independence. I get to leave work early, so it's a great trip.
Good. Well, I make a motion that we authorize a resolution be issued for the support of 169, 160 overpass.
I'll second.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Wayne. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Now, you'll draw that up.
Tonight, I just forgot something. Can I have my agenda back, or my mic back again?
What's it worth to you?
Everything's a cost, I tell you. The other thing this bill did was it created a transportation task force, and this task force is a pretty good-sized task force. It's, it's got Rich Prahl, Representative Prahl out of Parsons is chairing it, is on the representative side, and there's a senator that's a co-chair with it. It will meet eight times, and it will meet in each district, each of our six districts, and it will meet once in Kansas City and once in Wichita. I have no idea when it's going to meet or where it's going to meet, but it will happen because they have to have a report back next year to the legislature. But my, my request is, once we have this meeting, your attendance would be greatly appreciated, so you can put your comments in for the projects. And my guesses are going to talk about transportation, funding, I don't know what's going to be on the table, but anything that you might have to offer would be greatly appreciated.
Okay.
Now I'll shut up and leave. Thank you.
Yeah, if you'll let us know when it is.
I will. Right now, they haven't even told me yet where it's going to be. My guess is it'll probably be at Schnook, but I don't know that. They just say you're going to have a meeting, but I don't know where then.
Okay.
And you guys are lucky, because when I was at Coffeyville, I forgot that point, and I had to send them an email, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Jeff, you'll prepare the resolution?
Why don't you come up and I'll have it ready for you to sign.
Okay. 11 o'clock tomorrow.
Okay. AM.
AM. Okay, next item on the agenda are reports, city board minutes we have from the IHPRC and the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals. Are there any comments or questions about the minutes?
I have none.
Okay, if none, the next item on the agenda is city manager's comments.
I don't have any comments, other than I would like to schedule a special commission meeting for the budget presentation. If we could do that either- If we could do that either next Tuesday or Wednesday, that'd be the 16th or 17th, or 17th or 18th. If that would be possible.
We're looking in the evening?
Yeah, 5:30. Oh, I mean, if you want to start at 1 o'clock, that'd be fine too.
Yeah, I'd do that.
If your calendars are aligned.
There is a business after hours on Tuesday, but either one works for me.
Yeah, either one works for me too.
Okay, then let's look at, how about Tuesday, 5:30?
All right, great.
And we're at here, or?
Right here.
Right here.
Right here, River City. Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay. What about the update on the audit modifications? This is the first?
I didn't have, yeah, so much other things going on with the budget and everything, yeah, it's the first one, but there's really no significant change to what we gave you the last meeting, so.
Are the treasurer's reports all updated now? Are they still in process of?
They're still in process. We're up to April, so we'll have May and just need May and June and we'll be there.
Okay. Okay, commissioner comments. Louis?
Yeah, I do have a couple. One, I wanted to give you guys a heads up. I think I mentioned it earlier, but there's an Ask Commissioner column that comes out on Fridays and I sent in one. And it has to do with the blight in various areas, neighborhoods of the city. And so I've made some comments about that and it'll show up in tomorrow's paper. But I've had a chance to go through and meet people in these areas, some of the concerns that they have and there are plenty of concerns. And I think the problem is to the point now to where I think it's past even the city being able to handle with the limited resources and manpower of what we're actually looking at. So this may, excuse me, this may involve getting community organizations, church congregations, a community as a whole, and starting to look at some of these areas and identify and establish a plan of attack. It's going to take a lot of volunteers that will want to come forward and help. I've had two or three people here in the past have come to me and they said they would, they would be willing not only to work in their own neighborhood, but they would be willing to go into other neighborhoods and help. So maybe this would be something that we could coordinate with the City Public Works Department to where maybe we would have a group of, several groups of volunteer people work under the auspices of a city, either a city foreman or someone in the department that would be able to get city resources as we would need them as we work in an area. But I think it's to the point of where I think people want something, something done about it. And to me, it's, it's a reflection of all the community, of what we are as a community. And it's something that I don't think we can continue just to try to put a Band-Aid on it. The guys are working hard trying to keep the nuisance lots cleaned up. But it's overwhelming, but people have a responsibility too, whether you're a homeowner or whether you're a landlord or even a tenant. You know, you need to make sure that, you know, you keep your grass cut. And if you have trash laying around in the yard, pick it up, bag it up. Where people can buy and provide that service to pick it up. We, I think we all need, and I'm talking about myself, need to do a better job of looking within ourselves of what we can do as an individual and address our own property first and then start looking out in other areas where we can help. But it affects everyone in the city and perception is the key. It's the impression people get when they come into town. And it should be a good impression that we try to make. So basically what I'm reaching out to is people that are homeowners. If you're landlords, tenants, your tenants aren't abiding by keeping their property up and that's their responsibility, then I'm asking you to either help them or get them to clean up property. And then we have so much abandoned property here. I go by and there's still trash and clothes and debris left on the porch or out in the yard from the last occupant. And the last occupant may have been a year or two years ago, but it's just, it's just blight and it doesn't necessarily have to be that. But it's going to take a concentrated effort by the community and to tackle this program. But I think if we can work in with the city, come up with some type of a plan and set up a time period of where we can mobilize people. I thought of something here a while back when there was, if we had a storm blow through our neighborhood and it affected all areas of town, there will be neighbors coming out and they would be helping you drag brush, cut up brush, put it in a pile, help you with whatever they could. So even though this isn't an environmental storm, I mean, caused by Mother Nature, it's environmental in nature because it's dealing with trash, which attracts vermin and roaches and rats. And it's an eyesore and it's an eyesore to the people that are trying to maintain their property that live next to these areas. So that's what the article's about. So I wanted to give you a heads up and I've asked for people and I'm asking for you, your thoughts on this. What do you think maybe we're going to be able to do ordinance-wise, as a community, volunteerism? But I think that's something that's even past this being a problem just for the city. I think it's a problem for everyone in the community and that's how we're going to have to address it as a community. And I think, and it's not going to happen overnight, but I think if we start getting a program in process and moving in that direction, I think, I think you'll see people's attitudes change. And I think you see a lot of people that live in those areas. We'd be glad to see that, that we took, we took full measure of this. We came in, we set up a plan and we followed through and we worked together with them to help, help clean up some of these areas because a lot of these people feel like, like they're neglected. And I'm trying to tell them, you know, we have programs available and that, you know, if you're living next to it, you're frustrated and I'm frustrated with them. You know, I don't have a lot of answers to this, but I have ideas and I'm asking for ideas, not only from you and city staff here, but from the community. And that's what I've asked for in my Ask Commissioner article, so I'm going to just quit talking at that point.
Okay.
Harry?
Nothing for me.
But just an update. Today, I met with Vance from Trainer. We went through City Hall looking at what we had talked about with their contract, some different issues. One thing that was determined with the steel lentils above the basement windows, there's enough deterioration that he feels that needs to bring in a structural engineer to get advice on how to address repair of the lentils. There's some issues with the type of stone and the delicacy of it that he needs additional input. The structural engineer wasn't included in his proposal at that point, so he's going to be contacting one and bringing back opinion for that. They did investigate the waterproofing. They excavated a spot on the north side and it was in good condition, relatively tight. As they went down, he was concerned about affecting the leaching field. There was a gravel, full depth. And it appears like it's in, in good condition. The thing that he recommended was in the demolition to remove the plaster in the basement walls up to a certain mark height-wise. He thinks that maybe some of the moisture is coming from the sandstone that's licking in it. There was one location on the west side, north of the stairway, where water did come through the wall with pressure. There's some question about downspouts tying into the perimeter drain or if they're putting additional water in the leaching field that would raise the water level around the building and the gravel to cause that. He was recommending that that just be observed. He didn't feel it was necessary to re-waterproof the outside. Interior demolition was identifying the historic walls or walls that would be considered historic and letting them remain. Doing demolition on any furred walls, dry walls that had been added, suspended ceilings and some light fixtures. A lot is in the basement that could be raised and prepared. Roofing. There was some discussion about the bay that was used for the ladder truck, whether to wait or go ahead and put a roof on it. Looking at the square footage, I think we decided that they would go ahead and include that in the roof replacement. Change the coping on the wall. Tuck pointing, he was going to do, address the major areas and then do an alternate to do total tuck pointing. The stone portion he thought would pretty be, pretty much be a hundred percent tuck pointing of the joints there. He was on schedule. I believe he mentioned September having drawings pretty much completed. So they are progressing well on, on preparing documents to send out to bid. They had looked at some of the windows. They removed some trim to determine how much the historic windows were still there and how much had been removed, so. They're advancing pretty good on the project.
Great news.
Is MEP is coming Monday, I believe, to look at the facility. I think, you know, then that was pretty much dealing with possibly asbestos, depends what they determine. Looking at that as a separate issue maybe. We need to set up a special meeting to discuss City Hall and phasing the project, so let's look at that after we do get through budgeting. Throw that into the mix yet. But we do need to go ahead and address, address that. Some of the things, looking at, you know, with our duties and powers as commission, been going back through some of the presentations, the information that was given to us earlier while we were campaigning. And I think Tim had prepared it. Jeff was not available. And he mentioned that in our form of government, our duties are mainly policymaking and legislative body action. You know, of course, we have no administrative function, but just policymaking. And looking at that aspect of our duty or our powers with, with some of the things we've discussed and as we approach our budget, with the ER facility in Lebat Health here now, we have the opportunity, I think, to work closer with them than we have in the past that could assist in training and other issues and administrative functions that could affect our budget in the future. I think as, as policy, we need to look and consider what kind of agreement or relationship we could establish with them that could improve our healthcare for our community. Then as it goes, you know, healthcare is really going to be critical in rural communities as the next phase of development. How can we, as a city, support it? Wanted to bring that to us to discuss or think about. But we, you know, our problem with three commissioners, this is the only time we can talk. You know, we can't bounce ideas off of each other. We're very restricted on our interaction. And, you know, if, if we have an understanding, that's why I bring it up, is, you know, for us to discuss where are our duties, where's our responsibilities of community, what are our powers, you know, from some of the league meetings when we had that last mock commission meeting and just say, you know, really, where are our duties? And I've been looking at what Tim handed out and then also, you know, looking at our, our city ordinances. City ordinances is that the power to create departments is part of the commission. Whereas the city manager's responsibility is to administer the affairs of the city and, you know, the restrictions of interfering with the operation of a department except only with the approval of the governing body. But, you know, for us to, to function, we need, we have to understand ours. And I'm not for sure, you know, I can't talk to you, Gary, I can't talk to you, Louis. But these are some areas that I think it is, according to statute in our ordinances, one of the areas that we should be looking at.
I'll just mention at the staff level, we are in discussions, if you will, with Lebat Health in that very, for that very scenario you're talking about. Hopefully like sharing costs or sharing costs, but maybe purchasing, joining a purchasing group to reduce our costs for buying drugs and so forth and then training as well. So we're, we're talking about that right now.
Yeah, because, you know, I think we have the opportunity with an emergency facility and then to look at, at improving our service and our treatment of patients when we respond to a call preparing with the emergency. And I think air methods is, is the ambulance service that we have priority. And from what I've heard, they're looking at getting a bird, trying to work out to get an ambulance, air ambulance stationed at Lebat, which will really improve our response time on scene arrival. But, you know, I think if we look at to advance our healthcare, we should be working closer with them. Another, another thought with, with our, our projects. we depend a lot upon consultants to advise us, but we have no eyes making sure that our consultants are providing us services or making sure we're getting our benefit. Where, you know, an engineer would be beneficial to have those eyes working for us, examining the contract, knowing the knowledge that, well, you know, like we looked at Maple Street. We rely upon the consultant at over 200 an hour to advise that if we had that in staff, we could have continuity and even them maybe administering some specifications and work for us. Also could create an opportunity, depend on the size, but, you know, just a thought. If we had the engineer, then could the county rely upon our advice that we could share cost or trade services or Coffeyville or Kanee or Cherryville that, you know, by going into an actual staff engineer, we could benefit the whole county and sharing some services too? You know, the county has GIS, staff entering data. Is it something that, you know, like we do in engineer? We can get a better product for the county, working closer together with these departments?
No, I agree. I think we reached a point with the sales tax revenue, what the property taxes are that the people pay here. You know, we're going to have to start finding a way to either share expenses, share personnel, find a way to redirect money. And I know everyone has a lot of needs, but, you know, I hear a lot of people complain about the streets. You know, we're going to have to start being creative and finding ways to put more money into the streets. You know, we're behind on that and we're not going to catch up overnight, but we're going to have to start looking at how we're spending money and come up with some creative ways of redirecting some of those resources. You know, we're just not going to be able to continue to raise people's taxes and expect them to be happy. They're not going to be. And I think they've reached a point where they feel like they're paying a lot of money and they're questioning, you know, why, why is the condition of the city the way it is? And, you know, there's only so much explanation I can give them, but I think we really need to sit down and have that hard talk about, how are we going to get this done?
And what the $150,000, it's not a lot, but look how much that $150,000 we're addressing, not only Fifth Street, but parking for the stadium and parking for the swimming pool. We're paving Charlotte. We're doing another residential street that, you know, even $150,000 a year is finally going forward that we haven't addressed. And even staying upon that, we're not restricting our budget or another budget item, but we are making progress. There's been a lot that we've been able to do. And the more we can work with our surrounding communities that we're not all providing the same thing, but doing something that we can complement each other with, then we're all going to get more mileage out of our tax dollars. And, you know, I think it's something I had visited with one of the Coffeyville commissioners about trying to schedule a meeting with us commissioners from each town in the county that we can sit down and start showing solidarity or sharing ideas or how can we come together as a county to support each other that we can all benefit from our own, our expertises in our own area, but spread them farther. So. I think that was.
Well, I'll bring this out because you've made a point. Like I said, we never have any idea of, until we get here at this meeting. And a lot of times we're put in a situation to where we have to make a decision with five minutes of conversation here. And I will make myself open as often as possible. If you gentlemen want to set a meeting, as many as you want to set, have an open meeting and we can sit down and just discuss, what are your thoughts on a multitude of problems that we're looking at? What are some of your ideas and solutions? So we have a better understanding of what we're all thinking and idea of where we might end up going to. We're not going to, you know, we're not going to make any decisions out of that, but at least have a better understanding of, I know where you're coming from and you understand where I am. And we just have a better understanding of what it is we're looking and how we might actually get from point A to B. And I think that's presently what hurts us now because we just don't. And this is a hard time to come in, come in blind and then have to decide in a matter of a few minutes what it is we're going to do. I just find that ludicrous, but that's the system we work in. But we can work around it by having open meetings, get together and we just talk about how are we going to look at some of these items? And just kind of a session where we bounce off ideas and suggestions off each other with city staff and come up to some tough understanding of where we want to, you know, how we're going to get from A to B. But, yeah, I'm open anytime, as many as you guys would be willing to set up. I'm in.
I'm in.
I know it's hard with only three of us. We come together and, you know, how can we look up the ordinance, city ordinance on our duties and responsibilities and see how we can, by not being able to talk and share, we are handicapped.
We are. I've said many times when I was on city commission in a different city with five people, you know, every week I'd have lunch with one of the other commissioners and just talk about stuff or go get a beer after work or whatever. And it just seemed much, much easier than to, I don't know, work things out. Very restrictive having just three commissioners.
And I think that's maybe one of the things we need to meet and push for. We've talked a lot of times about increasing the commission to a five-member commission. We need to see that that happens so that we can. And, you know, just like going to look at blighted areas, going to look at streets, looking at the downtown, we can't do that together.
Right.
We can't go and look at an issue where we violated Kansas Open Meetings Act, but yet how can we really function without that interaction? And so that would be a goal that we do, that we keep current with that discussion with Lebat Health to see how far, you know, what kind of a partnership we can create with them and look at, once our budget would be primary, but after that, let's look and see about another work session or brainstorm session, whatever we want to call.
Sounds good.
Yeah, great.
Next item on the agenda is public concerns. I have one request to address the commission from Lisa Richards concerning taxes, county and city tax abatement ordinances versus development.
Hello, commissioners. I'm Lisa Richard and I warned at least one of you about, that I needed to speak with you about taxes and here it is, captive audience. So the county, Montgomery County, has been talking about a tax abatement ordinance among themselves, and I'm sure that you have heard about that. If you haven't, it would be under the state's statute for revitalization zones. And from the last meeting that I was at, it sounds like the state that they're at or the stage that they're at is that those zones would include the entire county of Montgomery County, but they would exclude the cities. So that at least is where they were at the last that I heard. And I had missed several meetings. There is a draft and I know that they were intending to have a finalization of that ordinance this summer. So I would expect to be seeing that coming about. I think their last meeting was canceled. So we should be seeing that coming out fairly soon. And I think Commissioner Yasuzi may have been present for some of those meetings.
Yes.
So some of the details involved, and because I did miss a couple of meetings, you know, I'm not going to be terribly detailed here, but they were going to include new construction in the abatement. They were going to include all types of property, including agricultural land, I believe industrial and also residential, and I'm going to run out of time, I see that, and also commercial. And it was going to be a 100% abatement for an increase in, for the increase in value or, you know, the new value for a 10-year period. So if a company such as Tyson were to come in and build a, is it a $60 million facility? Or is it in the billions?
365 million.
Okay, then that would be a 100% abatement for that facility for 10-year period. All the associated businesses that would come in, the box stores, the mini malls, the gas stations, the professional buildings, the housing, all of that. If you do not have a similar tax abatement within the cities, you will lose all of that to the outlying county areas that will attract those facility, those businesses and also that housing for, to seek that tax abatement. I was going to say that much more eloquently, but you now have this huge flashing sign saying you're running out of time, you're running out of time. So squeezed it in and there you go. I'm very concerned about our towns becoming little deserts of blight, as we heard about earlier, and I'll be back to talk with you about that later.
Yeah, thank you, Lisa. I appreciate that information. I had heard a little bit of discussion about that, but is it possible that we could get copies of what they're proposing? I don't know if we have any input to it, though.
We see the draft of the one that was for countywide, including the cities, but there was an attorney general's opinion issued to Wilson County that you can't just declare an entire county blighted just because, to get the abatement. They said you have to have some factual reasons to declare an area blighted. And so Attorney General's Office wouldn't approve it and they have to approve it. So I think the county knew that and that's why they're saying now, perhaps exclude the cities, but just do the county areas. I don't know if that would be much better with the Attorney General or not. There's that hurdle. And there's also, I think our, because our neighborhood revitalization doesn't include new construction, it's remodeling, improving existing structures. I didn't, I understood Hutter Saic covered new construction. Like the Tyson plant, that's a whole different ballgame.
Well.
The county, they said new construction.
Okay, that's, I don't think are the zones we have in Independence.
But we offer.
I think some of them do.
The new construction, okay. That's a different concept than just remodeling an existing structure.
But if you look at 100% tax abatement for 10 years and you're counting on the tax revenue from, considering Tyson, one of the selling points has been the growers, that those facilities will come online and increase tax value and revenue. Now you remove all that money for 10 years, where's your road maintenance coming from?
It's money you didn't have anyway.
Huh?
It's money you don't have anyway.
And hopefully it generates sales tax with the growth and everything. So there's some obviously benefit, but you're right, you do lose the property tax.
Yeah, and that's why.
And that's significant, but that's.
Because you're increasing traffic on your roads, which isn't ours unless they're passing through here. But, you know, it's just a lack of revenue. Be good if we could see some of that.
Whether it's through neighborhood revitalization or other means, the bigger companies that locate here will want a tax abatement sometime. I mean, Cessna did, AIW did, they all do.
I think when they looked at this, one of the meetings I attended with the county commissioners, I think Clay County has implemented this program countywide and they have had for, I don't know the timeline on this, but I was told that Clay County had. And evidently it's, they've met whatever legal requirements that they needed to have met to implement this in the county. Now that I haven't checked out myself, I've just been told that Clay County has and I haven't, haven't looked into it yet. So I'm just making that statement.
County Councilor Paul Kreitz has been researching it. He might know.
And next item on the agenda is an executive session for personnel matters and non-elected personnel. We have a motion, I'd make a motion, recess for an executive session for discussing employee performance pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception, KSA 754319B1. The open meeting will resume at, what, 20 minutes? 10 minutes? 6:50? And those going in would be city manager, commissioners.
And Jeff.
And Jeff. Now, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. We're back in session. There's no action from the executive session. So with that, it brings us to adjournment. There's no further business, so meeting is adjourned.